All right, this is the Budget Work Session of the City Council. The City of Cottonwood, Arizona will be held May 27th, 2017 at 5:35 PM at the Council Chambers.
You ready for some CPR, Chief?
Yeah, really. Mary Ann, City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Althouse?
Here.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Piper?
Here.
Councilmember Norman?
Here.
It looks like Vice Mayor Howdige is absent, Mayor Ilinski.
Here, I'm very sorry for being late. Next item is departmental budgets, starting with fire. Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is day three, and we're hoping that today we'll be able to do the budget wrap-up. We'll start off with the Fire Department. Today we'll have at least three speakers. We'll have the Fire Department would like to address the council. The Police Department would like to address the council, and Municipal Court would like to address the council. So with that being said, we'll start off with Mike Kirkendall, our Fire Chief.
Mayor, Council, good evening.
Good evening.
You've had a chance of obviously to go through the budget and look over all the different things, but I just wanted to touch on a few items from the Fire Department this year. Looking at our, first our capital budget, if you have that there, the, I was perhaps a little overzealous, well, I won't use the word overzealous, I was zealous in putting in for a number of things in capital this year, that if you look at the over $35,000, the dollars were quite high, but that was putting in for things that we tend to put in every year, the aerial ladder truck at a million and three, and the infrastructure of some new fire station, those things, knowing that, that we don't have that in the budget, but also realizing that if we don't place them in there, we need to make sure that you know that these are items that we do need. So with that, the items that were also in there in the over $35,000 is the $600,000, and that's on the engine that was already approved, and that was actually in this year's budget, that's a rollover to next year's budget. Since that time, there's also been $60,000 for a rescue tool that was also leased purchase this year that we've rolled over now too, and you don't have that on there, but it will be in the final budget, just due to the fact that we won't be able to get it before into the next year. But those are funded through that. So new capital in the over 35, we got, we have zero this year. The under 35,000, the same thing essentially, this year we're not able to budget, or not able to approve budgeting for any of the under $35,000 things for the Fire Department. Some of these items are going to become a real problem in the near future. I think we can get by this year. We needed, we had to do this obviously to meet the, the budget constraints that we're in here, but there are some of the things, the hoes and some things that are reaching a 10-year mark that is the recommended for them. So I'll be back next year, obviously needing to try to look for funding for these things to keep us in compliance with NAPA and the, the others statutes and standards that apply to us. Looking at our line item budget, like all the other departments, we made the cuts that we were able to make to get us to within budget, there's a number of items that I hate to lose, but the reality is this year, we're gonna have to do that, the major cuts that we made to get within the budget, and the last cut were items in training, and have to cut back in some of our volunteer program, and the numbers of people that we'll be able to have as volunteers, and also in, had to cut back some in, in our EMS expenses and our, and our operational equipment supply budgets for this next year, hoping that things don't break and, and doing our best to keep things going. With that, I had passed out a couple of items, just so that you know that we, we work very hard on, on trying to run a cost, a very cost efficient shipover at ours place. The, if you have in front of you a fiscal year 15 actual budget values, and I just wanted to bring this to kinda let you know that when we compare ourselves to other fire departments in our area, this is for 15 because that's the last time that I can get the call volume and the budgets yet, because they're still in, we're still midway through 16. So based on that, some of these departments have actually merged, but I don't think it's gonna change the, the outcome, but if you look at that, when you're using a call volume, which is one thing that we can kinda use that, that compares all departments, because population-wise you run into problems, because some departments with very low population have to still have fire departments, so their budgets look big. So you look, call volume is something that's kind of, you can look at, see how busy they are to what it costs to run them. You can look at this and see that while it seems like a lot of money at 8.97 per call, we're 60% less than Camp Verdi, less than half of what Verdi Valley Fire District is per call, and looking at Sedona at the other end, we're, we're three to four times less expensive per call for what we, what we do with ours. The other that I passed out to you is just to kinda show you what's going on in our department as far as call volume, the increases that we're seeing, we saw a little bit, actually a little decrease from 12 to 13, but since then, we've seen a steady increase, especially the last two years. Between 14 and 15, we were up 18% in call volume in one year. We were up 7% last year, based on what I'm seeing for this year, if we continue at the current rate, we're gonna be up maybe 10 to 11% over last year again this year, if we remain at where we are for, for a third of the year in approximately now. So just wanting to get that out, that, that while we're, while we're doing our best to hold the line and even cutting budgets, and if you look at our, our overall line item budget, the true dollars taking out the, or even looking with the, between last year and this year, most of the difference that you'll see are not things that I have any control over really within the department, their public safety retirement, which has gone up obviously greatly and has been discussed, life insur, our, our health insurance costs and workers' comp costs, but across the board, otherwise you'll see that there's not much variation from our years previously. So again, just making you aware that we're certainly enthused and, and happy that, that the fire truck, that we do have that coming, that that was in the lease purchase, so we're looking forward to that coming in this next year, and thank you for your approval for that, to go forward with that purchase, and I'll be coming back to you on the rescue tool, which shortly in the next month or so, as far as it's already been approved through the lease purchase. Any questions for me on, on the budget items?
Questions from Council?
I, I only have one question, Chief. Is there, do you have any kind of reason for the increase in the call volume? Is there any kind of?
You know, I'd love to tell you that, that I could give you a real reason for it. I think, you know, I think like everything else, I think we're, we're seeing what maybe the population, you're not seeing it, but we're, we're, our population is gaining in age, and a lot of the calls we run on, you, a lot of them are medical, and so consequently the calls for service are just up. I think one of the other things that we're seeing, we're seeing perhaps a, a bigger tick in, increase in calls for public service, just citizens assistance, that's one of the things we see. I think that's also somewhat of a social issue in our, our country, that a lot of our elderly population don't have families or others to help them, so they're calling on us to come and pick them up and do those things, but we're there to do that, and there's nobody else that's gonna provide that service.
Thank you.
So that's the best I can give you. I think also just the fact that in general, we're seeing an increase of, of activity in our area. Certainly, we, we serve a population of, you know, the 11, whatever the official is, 11,000 to 12,000 and that, but we serve during the day a much higher population base.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Sorry, I don't have a great answer for you on it, I wish I could pin it down myself.
Chief, I'm curious, under furnishing and equipment, what, what that big jump is, is that part of your, the ladder truck that we're purchasing, or?
I'm sorry?
What, in, under furnishing and equipment, what the large jump is from last year to this year?
Furnishing equipment, that's, that's capital, and what you're seeing there, that 660 that's in there, that's actually, that's the stuff that was leased purchased, that's the fire truck and a rescue tool, and that's rolled over, it was in this year's budget, if you see it, but it's also rolled now into the next year's budget because we won't receive it in time, so.
Okay.
Other than that, there is no new capital.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me give you some page numbers here, thank you Linda, for Councilmember Norman for giving me the page numbers. Police will start on page 28. Animal Control will be on page 32, called Code Enforcement. Communications is on page 30. Parks and Recreation, 33. Rec Center and Pool, 34. Custodial, 25. Library, 42. Municipal Court, 18. And then Economic Development, 37. With Police Department, we're, we'll, we'll go down the, their budget first, their line items, and then I've got a PowerPoint or a PDF presentation that they'd like to, to show the Council. And starting on page 28, their budget has gone out 8.6%, and of course, the largest portion of that is their PSPRS. Just a reminder that for their retirement, both for Fire and PD, we pay the full amount up the first month of the year, so we'll be cutting a check to Public Safety Retirement, well over a million dollars over the next, over the first month of the fiscal year. Again, that's so we can take advantage of their interest rate, any interest gains that they have throughout the entire year, rather than small monthly bites. Outside of that, their, their, they've got their rate, their, they've got a bit of a, a small spike in their salaries, it looks like they're finally getting a little bit more staff yet, however, we did reduce a couple of fire, excuse me, a couple of police officers off of their ranks. We did terminate anybody that were vacancies that we haven't been able to fill, so we just took them out, so in order for us to balance the budget. There's a few drops in, in the budget, especially in equipment. We have drops in, in equipment and building supplies, and those are mainly due to, we will have to forego a couple of things that we need in order to balance the budget. We did ask all the departments, PD came through with the biggest cuts with the two officers and their communications personnel, so they were instrumental in making sure that we got the budget balanced. Outside of that, most everything is pretty much in line either at the, by, by the end of this year or something similar to next year, so we don't look, really see that huge of an increase. They don't have very much capital for this coming year, only about 25 grand worth of Just a reminder, any grants that you see in the lower, the lower part of page 28 are, usually have a, or actually not usually, but have a offsetting revenue stream being the grant itself. If those grants don't come through, these expenditures will not happen.
Should I wait for Commander McCouch?
We're gonna go through, we're gonna go through a couple more, and then we'll, then we'll come back for them, because they, they're gonna talk about entire departments, all three of them.
Do I have specific questions about the Police Department budget should I ask now?
Oh, certainly, certainly, yes, please.
The community policing is, is dropping by, you know, $4,600, what, what's involved in community policing, and what will be cut?
That's why I have him here for backup.
Mr. Mayor, Commander Jordan McCouch, to answer your question, we had budgeted for about $3,000 for Cottonwood Cares Program.
Okay.
To assist with the fundraising for that program.
Okay.
With, I'm sorry, I forgot, the 501(c)(3) is Habitat for Humanity.
The what now?
Habitat for Humanity.
Okay.
We're working with them.
Any other questions from Council? No?
Okay, we'll move on to, to Animal Control, and that is on page 32. Relatively small department, two, two-person staff. Their increase is, is only 5% or almost 6%. Big portion of it is in their, their workman's comp and their, their life, their health insurance,
Questions?
Okay, we'll move on to Communications, and that's on page 30. As you may recall, we, we, we provide a communication service also called dispatching services for not only City Cottonwood and our City Fire Department, but also for quite a number of agencies in the Verdi Valley area, including Sedona, Clarkdale, Verdi Valley Fire, Fire District, ambulance service and so forth, and we're still trying to recruit more and more people to actually use our, our dispatch services, which of course will spread the cost among more and more members. Also, as part of our original presentation, we had eliminated one position, again, this is much like PD, one of those departments that has a real hard time recruiting individuals. We sometimes find good individuals, they'll work for us for a short period of time, realize night shift and shift work is just not for them, it, it can be very difficult, sometimes very, very stressful. So it takes a very special and very unique kind of individual, so we're, consequently, we're having, we're, we're having some op, we're gonna have to build some opportunities to try to get more and more people to sign up, but in the meantime, we have eliminated one position. This department shows a 12% increase. It does have a couple of increases there, mostly in the utilities and telephone, they, of course, obviously, the more activity they have, the more calls they have to have. They have a slight increase from what this current year, but yet quite a bit of a drop from last fiscal year, from the original budget for the current fiscal year. A lot of it has to do is we're, we may be replacing an individual there that has, that has tenured, that may be retiring, and we are currently putting our IT staff through the paces to learn their Spillman system, and as our IT mentioned a couple meetings ago, was they'll be upgrading Spillman this upcoming year to a more of a Windows-based rather than an old AIX Unix-based type program. So they're gonna have a really steep learning curve.
Is that the computer support? Is that, what were you talking about, the computer support?
The, the travel and training.
Okay.
It got bumped right back up instead of going down from the current year. Part of it will be having to get people up to, up to speed on the new Spillman programs.
So can you address the computer support increase? Was it, is it just, there's more computers there?
Well, they, they get, they get billed depending on how many computers they get. There'll be, the computer support will probably go along with the upgrading of the system, putting in a new server, will obviously take up more time, more of the IT time.
We had a question about the liability insurance line item for the Communications Department. Are they, do they have separate insurance or separate items? Because I didn't notice that for the department itself, maybe I dismissed it.
Most of the, most of the departments are, their liability insurance is, is in the non-departmental area. In this particular case, because we built out all of the cost to, to all the agencies, we actually break that one out and actually put it inside of the, inside of the, that particular department, that we can get a true cost of what the department is actually going to expense for the current, for the year, and that's what we actually distribute amongst all the members, including the City of Cottonwood.
Okay, thank you.
And also, what is the repeater expense?
The repeater expense, if I'm not mistaken, is the, the, up on the hill of Sunshine Hill, up at the very top of Mingus Mountain, that's essential that we maintain that, you know, for Communications in this entire area, a lot of it has to be line of sight, so, and we just about need a four-by-four, just about to get up there, but it has to be maintained.
That's.
So that's a maintenance expense then?
It's really a lease.
Yeah, it's a maintenance.
It's a lease for the property that, that we use up there. We're trying to find another location that is cheaper, but so far we haven't been able to find one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. With those, with those three departments being covered, I've got a presentation that Officer, Commander Eisenberg will go ahead and handle this, and also Commander McCouch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, Commander Jordan McCouch. The Chief regrets that he's unavailable this week, however, he said that he would be happy to address any of the Council's concerns, he will be returning next week.
Okay, thank you.
What we'd like to do tonight is to provide the Council additional information on the impacts that we sustain and/or are the result of some of the budget reductions to police service. The decision to cut personnel to meet the 3% reduction was a difficult choice for us, as we don't have a lot of areas that we can trim down very well. As Rudy had previously mentioned, you know, we have significant recruitment challenges with police officers, we're competing for a historically low number of desirable candidates, while other cities seem to be rebounding, emerging from a recession, filling positions that they've lost due to previous budget cuts, and in essence, we're seeing, starting to see the beginning of a recruitment war, where incentives are offered for new hires in different agencies seeking laterals. We're currently staffed with a, a very excellent talent of invest, of employees, and we'd like to invest in them, and to share with you that anytime a police officer vacancy is created, it takes almost a year for us to select and fill that position before they're a solo police officer on the street, as well as the dispatch positions, they take an extended amount of time to get a dispatcher trained to be a call taker on their own, it's in excess of six months. So beyond compensation, we're a very visible arm of the city, as we're driving around in the city a lot in our vehicles, and our vehicles are, many of them are over 10 years old, 100,000 miles on them. We do our best to keep a positive appearance of the city, but those are impacts that other candidates would see when selecting a city to apply for as a potential applicant, evaluating the city's health as a whole. In 2016, I calculated our shift relief factor to be 24%, meaning that at any given day, 24% of the scheduled people are absent for a variety of reasons, such as vacation, they're sick, or they're injured, and we do have several that are serving in the armed forces, military leave also affects us. Their vacancies oftentimes are filled by compelled overtime, which affect employees' quality of life. When those numbers fall below, we were typically required to call somebody in. Our current budget proposal represents the fourth position cut in several years to, down to 21 authorized police officers, and 18 of those are assigned to patrol. And when I say 21, I'm talking, not, not referring to the sergeants that supervise those officers, or task force officers, or school resource officers that are in other assigned specialty areas that service the community. One of the things that we look for in applicants is to try to be attractive to laterals, and that's quite difficult, because often laterals typically leave a department for higher compensation, more opportunity, making it uncommon for them to select the Cottonwood Police Department to attract quality lateral candidates, but we do on occasion get some for other reasons. As you can see, this represents one of those months in 2016's average vacancies. The red on the slide represents officers' shifts that had to be either extended or modified to fill the vacancies from the previous shift. So the, the way this works is, from the top down is an entire day, day, day shift, swing shift, and graveyard, and that represents six patrol shifts. Typically, it's a sergeant and two officers, obviously, we staff more during the day because we have a higher volume of service to the community and calls. That slide also represents two officers that are absent on FMLA, one on military leave, and one officer that's a recruit in training. We hired him in December, and he won't be on his street, on his own until August of this year, and then we have the three vacancies. Some additional considerations that we'd like the Council to consider are the potential for adverse service impacts, reduction in proactive policing, and reduced citizen interface. It impacts our participation in Regional Narcotics Task Force, there's been a change in the law for the RICO funding, the racketeering influence and corrupt organizations, which puts a greater restriction on what can be collected, a higher burden of proof, so we expect to see a decline in those funds, as well as there's a new approval process for spending. And we have used that for equipment and training for officers in the past. There's a reduction in authorized training, which may translate to safety and additional liability exposure, reduced morale, and increased attrition. Several of the initiatives that we've established, such as Cottonwood Cares, our Police Citizens Academy, Recruitment Media, our phone app, Community Service Specialist Position, Crime Analysis Ability, and Website Enhancements can be impacted or ended or deferred based on budget cuts. And right now, we're considering, we, the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy had asked for an officer to help with the academy, because they have to have recruit training officers to keep the recruits in line and show them where they're supposed to be, and help them with different aspects of the 20-week academy, and we thought we would be able to fulfill that, but it looks like we're probably gonna have to back out of that, so we won't be able to fulfill that. And I'd like to also remind the Council that we have the Northern, or the Verdi Valley Regional SWAT team, in addition to the Sheriff's Office, we're the only SWAT team on this side of the mountain that can provide a service, and we service Clarkdale, Cottonwood, Camp Verdi, and Jerome at, at their request, and sometimes we can assist the Evi-Pike County Sheriff's Office as well, Sedona in addition. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander McCouch.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Gary Eisenberg, Commander with Cottonwood PD. All right, so Commander McCouch is the Commander for Patrol, I'm the Commander for Support Services, which includes Dispatch, and again, just some considerations that, that we had to make in, in meeting our budget requirements, it's, there were some very difficult decisions, and we, this is, again, something we, we would like you to take a look at and consider during this budget process. Our operation area is outlined by the map, we dispatch for the Police Department, our Fire Department, and five other, five other agencies surrounding us, Sedona, Camp Verdi, and Jerome's, we'll move on to the next one. And things change quickly, from the time I made this slide, we just lost another trainee, so we're five vacancies and three dispatchers in training. It's just, it's a tough job, and an individual isn't gonna make it, it's an unfortunate situation, but we end up letting them go. So we do now have another opening in Dispatch. So again, you know, when we talk about losing police officer positions or communications positions, we're, we're having a difficult time filling the ones we have, so it's very, very hard for us. So we have four, you've all been to the center, I believe, so we So we have four, uh, you've all been to the, uh, center, I believe, um, so we have four, uh, call taking, or four positions, a call taker, a police dispatcher, and two fire dispatchers, and we want to keep those filled twenty-four seven. Um, and, uh, so currently, what we're allotted is a communications manager, three supervisors, and eighteen specialists, um, and, uh, currently, one of our supervisors is absent on FMLA. So as Commander McCouch had mentioned, it takes about six months to really get somebody going, and unfortunately, this last person we lost after four months, uh, it just wasn't working out, so, uh, six months is about the time, uh, where they can actually be a solo dispatcher on their own. We tried to, the, the IXP consideration, we did a, a study with IXP when we first started this, they recommend five point seven, uh, dispatchers per position, um, so that would, would have put us at twenty-three, uh, we're allotted twenty-two, and, and that will be down to twenty-one. Um, so some staffing challenges, again, when, when you, when you look at the staffing, um, you know, we talk about five point seven for every position, um, one way to think about that is if it, if it takes two point three people to move a heavy object, and, and you only have two people, there's no way you're gonna move the heavy object, obviously, you have to round up, um, so it, it makes it very difficult when, when we, when we round down, and these are just some staffing challenges, uh, that we face, um, again, we would try to re, you know, maintain specific goals, especially for the, the fire department as well, there's certain times, and we'll get that into the next slide, um, but these are just, uh, kind of a circle of things that go on when, when we have those reduced staffing levels. Um, that's about all I have on that slide. And then the workload, these are some of the total calls that we've been receiving over the past year, um, and, uh, you can see, it's, it's quite a number of, uh, calls, uh, then we have dispatched calls for the police department and all the combined fire agencies and EMS, and additionally, they, they do burn permit activations, so people call in, and, you know, they wanna, they wanna activate the burn permit, uh, our dispatchers take that information, they do other, other, uh, duties, uh, such as entering warrants from the court. Um, so again, uh, you, you know, some of the standards we do, uh, and again, if you, if you don't have that trained staff, uh, it's difficult, I just wanna run over some of these, we have to answer thirty percent of our nine-one-one calls within ten seconds of the busiest hour of the day, uh, ninety-five percent of our calls within twenty seconds, um, we have to have ninety percent of our emergency calls completed within ninety seconds, uh, we have to have ninety-nine percent of our calls completed within a hundred and twenty seconds, and if there's two employees working, uh, the, the recommendation is that you have at least one supervisor for every two employees that are on the council, so those are some quick times to receive the call, get the information, and get those calls dispatched, and again, with the turnover that we have, or, or the, the limited number of dispatches that we have, it, it certainly makes that a, a challenging issue for us. And that is all I have, is there any questions for myself or Commander McCouch?
Council, any questions? I, I'm just curious what your plans are for, to attract and, uh, retain folks at the communications center, what are you, what are you doing right now that you hope is successful?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, that's a good question, um, uh, we, we get a steady stream of applicants, uh, we, uh, what we're trying to do now, instead of waiting for a full month or a large applicant pool, um, and then test, what we're trying to do is as soon as they come in and they test, uh, if we have one or even two, we'll schedule an oral board, and we'll get these people oral boarded and get their background started. Uh, recently, we had, uh, kind of, as an example, we had one gentleman pass his oral board and turned in his background information, that's another, we, we lose people on backgrounds, we, we do a fairly thorough background, uh, examination on these individuals, and some people just don't, they just don't make it. So this kid turned his stuff in, um, I'll bet within a week, we had his background done, the younger they are, the easier the background, 'cause there's really no history, and, uh, it makes it a lot easier to do their background, so within probably a week, uh, we did our final interview, he's already been polygraphed, so he's moving along very quickly. At the same time, or actually, the next day, in order to attract these people and get them hired, um, we had, uh, he, he oral boarded one day, we had two more individuals that did an oral board the next day, they both got their background packets, and, and neither of them turned them in for, uh, one of them did not turn in at all, and the other one turned it in, uh, almost two weeks later, where this kid, he turned his in right away, and he was, he's practically hired, uh, these other people were just dragging their feet. Um, I, you know, whether it's because they're very young, um, and, and maybe no sense of urgency, I don't know, we certainly have a sense of urgency, but I don't know, I, I, but we are trying to get those people, when they do their tests, get them oral boarded, get them interviewed, instead of waiting for, for large groups, um, uh, we certainly are advertising them in, in some of the national, uh, dispatching organizations.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, thank you, I know it's, you know, you're one of the largest departments here, I appreciate your efforts too, it's, it's tough to-
It's difficult decisions. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we will move on to Parks and Recreation, that'll be page thirty-three. And I have, um, Richard Faust, and, um, has Alan here to answer any questions, I can't answer, of course, my staff. Parks and Recreation is, is actually pretty, pretty lean, they've made, they've had to make some, some difficult decisions also, um, they've had to, to cut back on some of their summer programming, and they also had to trim down some of their, uh, other programs, uh, not necessarily eliminating, but actually trimming them down in order to be able to accommodate the, the current budget. Going down the list, one of the biggest things that they've had as far as the spike is concerned, it would be their, their health insurance, that's another, um, that's not uncommon when there's a, a type of a change in, in the plans that they, um, that the different employees have, if there's a change in the plan, a lot of times, that will cause a bit of a spike. Outside of that, you'll see quite a number of small reductions, and those, that was in order to accommodate the, the need to trim down the budget. Uh, you'll see a drop in your softball programming, that was one of the things that they had to trim down in order to be able to, to help us with the, with getting the budget in place, also, public relations, that has also been trimmed down a bit, their publications are gonna be, uh, more digital and less print. And currently, they have no, no capital, uh, budgeted for.
Any questions from Council, Carla?
I do, for, and I'm sure Richard can help out with this, fifty percent cut in your softball budget is pretty significant, is that, is anybody stepping up to the plate to help with that, or how are you, what's happening with that? I realize it's only a few thousand dollars, but it's a big part of-
There's a, um, pardon me, uh, Richard Faust, Community Services General Manager, um, this is kinda happening statewide and nationwide, we're seeing a, um, what we once saw back in the nineties, in the late nineties, and the, by mid-two thousands, uh, we, we saw a spike in, in actual programming, um, softball programming has just, uh, really dropped significantly. Um, when we were looking at, um, back in probably the mid-two thousands to about two thousand twelve, we had, uh, close to, uh, eighteen total men's league, men's league teams, so we would have about eight, um, A-league teams, and we would have about, uh, nine or ten B-league teams, and we had a, uh, women's league, uh, program, and then we also had, we were even thinking of doing some additional things, but at this point in time, we're looking at, uh, eight men's league teams and, and then like, uh, seven women's, and so we've really drastically cut the program, um, so what our thoughts are is to try to regrow the program by fall, by doing a fall programming, we just cut out all of our spring programs. What that does then is eliminates, um, our, our capital cost, or I mean, our operational cost on lights, because the lights are so intensely, um, costly, so it would eliminate a lot of costs on lights, it would eliminate field, um, possibilities, it would also give us the opportunity to grow the fields and maintain the fields better, so we've never had a break in twenty, that I know of, in twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six years, um, running those fields, we've never had one, so it's just been continuous, so for us, it will also give, uh, buildings and parks, maintenance through Public Works, the opportunity to probably, um, at least do a lot of field maintenance that hasn't been done in a long time.
Okay.
And so we'll get ready for fall season, and then our hope is, is that we'll regrow a program, we normally do a co, uh, co-ed, co-rec program in the fall time, and we see close to anywhere from fourteen to sixteen teams, so we're hoping that maybe we might even get more, so that's one of the, the things that we were thinking of, that, um, we could probably just do without seeing that there's that many, that it's just drastically cut. We looked across the national wide, um, spectrum, as well as statewide, it's just really falling off immensely, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, so what we're talking about is, uh, men's and women's programs here, not youth programs?
Men's and women's only.
Who runs the youth programs?
That's all done by the, um, the Verdi Valley Little League program, so, yes, and so they also run also the Girls Fast Pitch softball program as well. Uh, they're seeing, um, probably an uptick, uh, the one thing we're seeing more than anything else is an increase in Girls Fast Pitch softball tournaments, uh, they're growing significantly, uh, that's probably similar to what we saw, you know, ten, twelve years ago with soccer programming and tournaments, but that's what's happening now with Girls Fast Pitch, so you can go down and you can watch some of the tournaments down there, where there's twenty-four to twenty-eight teams that are on the, the, um, the youth fields, and then they're taking over the adult fields, because we don't have enough fields, so we, we actually shore, uh, shore in the outfield areas, and they're, they're just coming in, it's just incredible to watch those games, so if you get that opportunity, it's fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
We'll move on to Rec Center and Pool, that's the following page, following two pages. Recreation Center has, has a bit of a, of a drop, and, for what they plan to do this year, and a significant drop from last year, part of it, of course, is, is that they don't have any capital planned for next year, all of it will be handled this year to the tune of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Other things that they did trim out in order to balance the budget was, uh, equipment, maintenance, and repairs, had a thirty percent drop. And of course, their public relations that I mentioned with Parks and Rec, they also trimmed down their, their, their public relations and concentrate most, more and more on such things as Facebook and other, other social media and electronic type of, of disseminating of information.
Can you explain to me the, again, the rise in, in computer support, it seems like every department's got a spike in computer support, and you said it's based on how many computers each department has?
And that part, the, it's, it's, it's all allocated department by the amount of computers, one of the things that, that we're working on in, and, 'cause we have a lot of calls and IT help, IT help desk issues with, uh, slow internet, um, if you, if you're inside any city building and you try to, let's say, get onto our city webpage, it actually sits there and cycles, but if you're at home and you have, let's say, Cox Cable or some fast internet, you can get on it really quick. The problem is, of course, we've got a lot of employees that are always on the system, high, the traffic is very, very high on our systems, and we're trying to, to get, um, Century Link to come in and, and open up a couple more high, high, um, high-speed lines for us, and that's gonna actually cause us to have to upgrade some of our systems, and of course, then when we start upgrading, we don't just go to that building and actually charge it to that particular department, that particular piece of equipment has two or three other departments that are, that are tied via microwave, so what we try to do is buy the equipment and then, and then, uh, distribute, distribute the cost amongst, um, amongst the different departments, as well as when we do service calls on them, it's based on their Q, uh, excuse me, their, um, number of computers they have, we cost allocate that way.
So the spike that I'm seeing is just that every department's gonna be upgrading their-
Just, we're, we're trying to improve the system, because we, we have just so much tr, we get more and more traffic constantly, uh, all the digital stuff that we have is getting heavier and heavier loads on it, so we're trying to, to upgrade our systems, and again, we're, unfortunately, we don't have broadband in the area, so we're kinda tied to, um, you know, whenever cer, uh, uh, Century Link has an opportunity, they're busy too, to come in, we've got a couple of, of high-speed lines ready to go, as soon as they can go ahead and connect it, and that'll be helpful, and again, all that cost, uh, will be ap, allocated to the different departments.
Okay. Any other questions from council? No?
Next one we've got, of course, is the City Pool on page thirty-five, that one has a, a real slight uptick, um, in its costs, um, we, we have, we are looking at possibly, uh, closing the pool a couple of, couple of weeks early, is that correct?
Actually, probably in about August, this one will, will actually close down for long.
So in other words, we'll be closing down a little bit early, that, that shouldn't affect, uh, Dominguez Marauder Swim Team, uh, that's still something that is, we need to talk to them about as far as cost, uh, for, for the pool, 'cause I believe they use it through October or November, through November, and of course, runs up our costs, and we ask them to at least pitch in for some of the costs of that, but, um, uh, pretty much, we're looking at probably closing it about two weeks early than we normally do in order to be able to cut our costs.
Rudy, I assume this, um, department's also getting hit by the minimum wage increase?
Uh, it's, Parks and Rec is probably one of the departments that's getting hit the hardest, because they hire the most amount of-
Part-time.
Of part-time, traditionally, a lot, especially during summer, the high school kids, and, and, and we, we really need them, especially for the pool, and of course, all the activity, we have a spike at the Rec Center, because we have a lot more people during summer that are allowed, they're able to come in, but yeah, they, they have the heaviest demand on, on kids, and the ten per, the ten dollar minimum wage is affecting us.
Okay. Any other questions?
We've got the Custodial Contract on page twenty-five. Uh, that's a fairly small, small department, almost strictly contract. We're looking at, at a significant increase on it, mainly due to the changes in, in the minimum wage laws that are affecting us quite a bit. We just opened the bids on the, on the contract today, so we will, we'll be reviewing that particular, uh, RFP, the council has already talked about how to deal with that particular issue, but we'll be coming back to council and, on those, uh, on that issue a little bit later on.
Okay. All right, no questions, move on.
Um, one, one department that, that is on here, and I forgot to mention, is, uh, the Youth Center, that used to be the old, um, Boys and, Boys and Girls Club, that's on It has been, we've been kind of remodeling it in little, in phases to, to fix a lot of deficiencies that were in there when, when it was vacated and we took the department over. Um, this program was originally over at the Rec Center, but was having growth problems, um, when, uh, the building, the old, uh, Bill, Boys and Girls Club building became available, uh, we took the opportunity and did some minor, uh, repair work, moved the kids in, uh, moved their, the youth coordinator over there, however, we found that there was more issues, um, after we moved them in, and we've been kind of phasing in the repair work that's been done. Currently, it's, it's a safe venue, but we, there's still some issues- Currently, it's, it's a safe venue, but we, there's still some issues that need to be resolved. Some areas have been basically locked out until we go ahead and get them fixed, so keep the kids from going into certain areas of that building. Am I correct on that? We will, we will continue to, to fix that building up and eventually hopefully open it up to the entire building for the kids to use. It was a much-needed facility, and it's great because you happen to have that, that Old Town Park right in front of it where the kids can go run and scream and holler, and that's always good for the kids. We have next is the library department. That'll be on page forty-two. Their budget is, is fairly tight. I know that they reduce, reduce their book purchases in order to be able to accommodate the, the, what we needed to go ahead and balance the budget. They did reduce some of their temporary staff. It's one of those things where basically they're, they're also getting hit with some of the minimum wage issues, which of course pushes them up a little bit. So they kind of had to trim down their budget in order to accommodate them, which may mean that we may be relying more and more on, on volunteers. I do have Mary here in case there's any questions that she can add to. That'd be great. At the top part of the, of this particular page, you can see the contributions the City of Cottonwood puts into this library. This year, we planned it to contribute $851,000 into this library. The county portion is $169,000. Next year, we plan to, again, infuse $825,000. The county will be infusing or transferring over $204,000. There's quite a bit of investment from the City of Cottonwood in this particular library.
Rudy, what is the difference between the items above, like the transfers in from the city, and then the line item for the indirect cost to the general fund that's below?
Where we, okay, I see that.
Six ninety-three hundred.
Six oh nine oh three hundred.
Similar cost for all lots.
Oh, that's right. I apologize. Right. Because they're in a special revenue fund, much like we do with HERF and, and our enterprise funds, as a special revenue fund, you try to treat them similar to a business. You try to go ahead and get them to capture all the different costs that they have. We do that with HERF, we do that with transit, we do that with library, we do that with our enterprise funds. The indirect cost is administration, finance, HR, IT, what else do we have? Purchasing. Those are all allocated in an indirect way to this particular, to this particular department. So in a, in a sense, we give them a contribution, and in a sense, they are going to give us back the, the cost of our services to provide it because they don't have a payroll department, they don't have an accounting department. We allocate our costs to them. Each one of those different departments has different allocation formulas. Purchasing goes based on their entire, on their budget. Finance, that goes based on their budget. IT is based on the number of computers that they have. HR, the number of individuals that they work with. So we have an indirect form, costing formula for those departments, such as, again, HERF, transit, library, and enterprise funds.
And we treat them separately because they receive grant funding from-
There, there is-
Yopie County, and they receive-
There's always, there's always, there's a fine line whether they should be treated in the general fund or should be treated in, in a special revenue fund. Traditionally, if a large amount of their allocation is specifically for that purpose, such as the infusion of cash from the county, then, then it needs to stay in a, in special revenue. Over the years, of course, the City of Cottonwood contribution has grown quite a bit. It can probably go in either or, but we've always chosen to go ahead and allocate it separately, and we keep it separate. And we, it gives a good idea of how much that library costs us.
Any other questions from council? Okay.
The next one I have is municipal court, and I, we have Judge LaSota here with us, and I'll go over the budget, and we'll kind of tag team, and he'll go ahead and, and kind of add to it. Their, their budget shows a bit of a growth from the current fiscal year expected, not necessarily from the budget, but from what they expected to end this year to next year, about fourteen percent. Most of that is in, a lot of it, not most of it, but a lot of it is in your, your health insurance and, and in their court enhancement expenses. And, and he'll explain a little bit more about the court enhancement expenses. You know, I'll just briefly touch on it, and he can give you some numbers. His, the court enhancement, council allowed, he proposed them, which was a, a way to get a lot of, in a sense, unmandated or unfunded mandates from the court system when they go out and they say, you need more security system, you need to have cameras, you need to have this and that. They were, they were basically strapped into City of Cottonwood. Several years back, he proposed, and council agreed, that we should have a court enhancement fee, which he collects as part of all the fines that he does, and it sits in an account separate from all the other accounts, in a sense. And then when we go out and there are certain mandates that are required, he goes and draws from that account. He can explain probably a little bit more about what all these mandates are coming up, but those are basically money that's reserved, set aside for the court system. And as you can see, there's a, a pretty sizable spike from, from this year to next year, and that's where a big portion of that money's coming from. It's coming from his reserve funds.
Questions from council?
I did about what exactly is going into the expenses this year. Is it just the cameras that causing that large spike?
And that's where I'll, I'll have him go ahead and, because he's got a presentation that also entails the court enhancement funds. Judge?
Thank you. I have a little handout that goes through court enhancement. What we've collected and what we've spent so far. Could be a little better reading these things. First, I'm most gracious enough to prepare this for this meeting for me. So basically, the court enhancement fund started in early 2010. The first column shows you the amounts that have been collected in the different fiscal years, and the far right column shows you-
This is the budget.
And the far right column shows what has been expended so far. The, that eighty thousand figure is a lot of security things we have to do. We've had the US Marshals and Cottonwood Police Department went through and did a lot of recommendations of things we need. So we're going to do a lot of external cameras, we're going to need a lot of internal camera is in the courtroom as well. We're going to be doing, like some other departments are going to be too, where you have the, you know, the badge that you wear, and it'll, it'll let you get in through the doors, you know, so that all the door latches will have to be changed. Additionally, there's going to be a tie-in where we're going to have some equipment that we're going to put in the communications center, the 911 center, so that if some emergency happens at the court, either during hours or even after hours, if an alarm goes off, they're going to be able to look and see what's going on, and they'll know whether or not they need to send a one officer because it's a minor disturbance, or whether or not it's something that needs a SWAT team coming down, you know, something that'll help with the, the security. Additionally, we're going to have some other security things that will be required by the, by the Supreme Court in upcoming years, too. And at our conference in June for presiding judges statewide, they're going to give us more information on that. At a minimum, we're going to have to do things like get additional X-ray ones and things like that for security, and then we're going to have to see if we can get volunteers or there might be some extra expense at that point in time. But that court enhancement fund allows us to use things for operations, security, and enhancement. So I computed approximately over the time since I instituted this, approximately $175,000 that we've collected that we would have had zero towards. And we haven't had to draw from city funds for all these different things that we spent on, nor will we have to draw from the city for any of these funds on that eighty thousand that has to be spent. And it's a, a fund that keeps replenishing itself because we'll keep having $20,000 a year or so that comes in every year or so, and if we have more expenses that we have to do in the future, somewhere along the line in the future, we're eventually going to change our, our recording system to where it can also have a viewing system as well, which would also be where people could go onto a website and look and see what's going on in court and be able to see things, so allow for further transparency in, in the future. And that's something that's not going to cost the city a dime. Its defendants are paying for that out of, out of the traffic tickets and criminal matters that they get. I'll be happy to answer any questions about that. Did that answer your question, Councilman?
It did, but are these items that you just mentioned discretionary at this point, they're not actual mandates from any agency or department at this time? They're just suggestions?
Not at this time. There are going to be some, but they're recommendations for security purposes. And some of the things that we've done for security purposes within the past couple of years paid off. Like at one point in time, we had a recommendation to do security screens on the windows, or we double paneled them and had security screens in. We had someone try to break into the court last fall, and they had a big rock or something that they, they threw through the window. And with the way that security screening worked, it busted the first window, didn't even put a, put a scratch on the second security screen or the second window, so instead of being able to come into the courthouse and do whatever damage they were going to do, it stopped them. So it saved. So a lot of these things are going to be for everybody's protection, including, you know, the public that comes to the court. If, if something happens at the court, you know, then we'll be able to have what we need for recording cameras and everything, too. Like not having cameras for that incident, we have no idea who did the damage, whereas now if we put cameras on the outside and they keep them for so many days, and they're going to be keeping some, some things at the police department, we'll be able to know who that was, and, and the police will be able to do enforcement for that. So it's not, it's not mandated for a lot of those things, but they're certainly in the best interest of the city to have the proper security and protection there at the court, court building.
And I, I just had one more question about the recordings, though. You said that this budget for the court enhancement expenses includes amounts to upgrade the audio recording equipment?
Well, that's going to be a future of matter.
Okay. So in the future, because I thought there were two, one which is going to be audio-video improvements, and then now audio.
I was throwing that in, is this something we're looking at in the future, too? And, and there's still going to be plenty of money for that type of thing that we'll still have to do.
Okay, thank you.
In case anyone didn't know, Janie Randall is retiring. She's going to be moving to Washington with her husband. So we're, we've got a search going on right now for a new court administrator. We're doing an internal and external, internal, internal search. If we end up going with an internal search, internal employee, then we'll also be needing to hire a clerk position as well. There's going to be some overall savings from that for this fiscal year and for next fiscal year, because Janie is above midpoint on her salary. Whoever replaces her cannot be higher than midpoint, so there's going to be some salary savings there. Plus, if one of the two internal people elevate up, then their clerk position would be at its midpoint of no higher than six to seven thousand, less than what that, that clerk is currently making. So there's going to be some savings both this fiscal year and next fiscal year due to those, due to those changes. As indicated, we're going to have the statewide presiding judges meeting in June for more security information, so I'll have more to be able to talk about at that point in time. Some of the things we also need for security, too, is, I, I think that includes, the costs include some things that we need for barriers for the front of the courthouse for, like, we're going to do concrete planter boxes, which would be, you know, decorative as well and, and functional, so water runs off the edge of the roof, it'll go into the planter box as well instead of into the, into the parking lot, where it makes things more slippery at, at times. But that's something that we're going to need to have because you see what happens in these other cities with people driving their cars into front of buildings. We need something to block that off, because the whole front section where the clerks are, three of them are in line to where if someone drove into that front wall, it's not going to be a good scene. So we're going to need to put some things there. But fortunately, because we have the court enhancement fund, fund money, it's all going to be able to be taken care of without having to touch any city funds. And, let's see. And just to point out, too, two clerk positions were frozen prior to 2009. They've remained unfrozen. So, you know, with efficiencies that we've implemented at the court, we've been able to do without those two employees for the, for that time. We had one period of time where we had to fix some things from previous staff that were discovered that we had to fix with DPS and with motor vehicles on, on records and information that they needed. So we had to hire somebody part-time, but we used court grant money for that, so it didn't cost the city anything, again, for that. That came out of court grant money that we were able to discover and apply for and receive. Additionally, I've, I've given Rudy an additional idea for some, as a possible revenue source for the court, so he'll be talking to Mr. Horton about that as another way to try to bring in some additional revenues in addition to just court enhancement fee money as an additional revenue source.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions?
Counsel, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Mayor Council, we're at, we're at a point where we've, we've covered-
Is that one more? Economic development?
Oh, I forgot. Poor Casey. I am so sorry. That would be page thirty-seven.
You just want to make us come back tomorrow night, right?
By the way, we forgot somebody. Mind showing up one more day. Thank you for pointing that out. This is another fairly, fairly small department. Their total budget's $248,000. It's three percent increase what they're, what they anticipate to use this year. As I mentioned during the, during the original budget, proposed budget presentation, one of the things he, he assisted with by, was by cutting out some of his focus on the future money, so he could go ahead and balance the budget. Outside of that, his budget is, is fairly lean. There really isn't too much to it. Again, it's a staff of two, and they also have to run the Business Assistance Center right across the street, so they keep themselves fairly busy.
Any questions from council on this budget?
Okay. Now, we always have a section for other items that the council would like to discuss. Is there some issues that, that you see that we need to talk about, or, or things that you would like to change in the budget? Before we do the, the basic, the wrap-up we do every single year right after a council needs, to kind of point out some highlights again of what's in the budget, we also have the answers to some of the questions that, that the council has asked. So if, if there is- if there's any additional discussions or ideas that you have, now mind you, my, today doesn't necessarily end the, the budget discussion. As you go home, again, as I've mentioned several times, is you go home and you, you sit down, think about it, and you're sitting here getting a cup of coffee or, or combing your hair. You know, you can always give us a call, drop us an email. If you have a question or suggestion, we're always open to suggestions. We won't always take them because there's issues involved, but we, we are always open to suggestions. So by all means, if you, if something comes up after this, after tonight, send them out over, and we'll be happy to consider them.
So Rudy, some of the questions that we had asked and asked for you to bring back more information, and it'll be in this next.
Correct.
So maybe we could go through this and then see if we have...
That'd be fine with me.
It's fine. It's good.
Okay. As we do every year, once we go through the budget, there's usually a lot of questions. From here, this point on, of course, we get every, all the information that we've gotten, all the feedback from you. From this point, we start putting together our tentative budget, and I'll discuss a tentative budget in shortly. Some of the things we'll discuss, and some of this, of course, is just going over some of the things we started with a few days ago. We'll go over, again, the 30,000 view of the budget, where it still sits, or if there's been any changes to it. We'll cover a couple of items on the strategic plan. Strategic plan, we'll highlight some of the budget reductions, because I think it's important to understand the impacts that some of these reductions have. We'll talk about the reserve fund status, and of course, we'll talk about future meetings. And again, I'll take any questions at that point in time, too. The budget summary, as I mentioned, some of this is going to be rehashing what we talked about on Monday, but I think it's important that those people that are here right now realize all the work that's gone into it, and they understand what we're talking about. Want to go ahead and, of course, just highlight the budget and personnel changes. This year, the top portion of these are actual full-time employees that we've actually put into the budget. What you need to note, of course, is the fact that the, all three of them are grant-funded. In order so, for us to be able to put these positions in there, if they need to be grant-funded because the city is trying to avoid adding any more staff without there being some sort of resource for it. And as you have already seen, we've burdened a police department, fire department, parks and rec, and a lot of other smaller departments was trying to balance the budget, and we can't take on any more staff unless they're grant-funded somehow. On the bottom half are a couple of things. A few of them are reclasses, though I call them all reclasses, there are actually a few of them are reclasses. The first three positions up there are actual reclasses, admin services, general manager to deputy city manager, head lifeguard to facilities maintenance, fire chief to fire captain, I mean, fire captains to fire captain battalion chief. And again, we've talked about the reasons we are doing these changes at no cost, additional cost at this point to the city. It's just they're all inside of their range, so they will remain there. The fire marshal and lieutenants, we realized that they needed to be some changes done for those positions in order to make them comparable to other area for those positions. The police officers, the sergeants, commanders, and chiefs, those had a two-step increase, and that was mainly done because over the years, not over the years, over the years, I'll go back, over the years, we had always kept the fire department and police department at the same range, realizing that there should always be some sort of difference between the fire and police service. And we had just never done it. Over the years, we've had compression issues, and now, of course, recruitment issues. So in order to kind of circumvent some of the issues that we're having, or avoid some of the issues we're having, we've made a differential between the fire and the police service. Not that any one or the other is less important, it just means that they're across the state and actually across the nation, traditionally, the fire department is a little bit, slightly below most police departments. The changes to it, we're looking at at least 6,000, 6,400, because we have three officers that are going to be affected, that we're going to have to bring them into the minimum range. There'll probably be a few more costs, not very much. We figure total will be under 10,000 because we'll have to make some adjustments. Once we move these officers as of July 1st into the reins that they will now be in, we already have some officers that are right at that range that have been here for a year or two years. We're going to have to up them a little bit, so there's a little bit of differential because of their tenure. But we don't expect it to be over about $10,000 total in cost to get that squared away, give This is where we had a couple of questions on the status of employee benefit. We mentioned that we had, the merit program is budgeted at $432,000, and that's one of the things that is still funded in there. The question was, on average, what does the merit percentage given to employees? And after some quick calculations, Kirsten came up with the answer, and it's 3.86%. Nearly 4% is what we give employees. Some do over 4%, others do well below 4% and 3%. Those people that traditionally hit below 3% end up with a performance, what are those things called? Performance Improvement Plan, PIP.
Would you, I'm sorry, would you repeat that last statement?
The statement is anything, anyone who comes in below a 3%, a 3, and their rating traditionally ends up on a Performance Improvement Plan. And they can't get, in a sense, a salary increase until such time as they complete the Performance Improvement Plan. Usually, that's more of a nudge just to remind them that they've got to kind of get on the ball. Those are fairly rare in the city of Cottonwood. We do occasionally do have them, and usually, they're fairly easy to correct with a PIP.
So I'm confused. Anybody who scores below, anybody who gets below a 3?
A 3 score, on a 1 to 5.
On a score of 1 to 5.
I'm rating them from 1 to 5, right. Yeah. And all it is, is just a reminder, just to tell them we're keeping an eye on you, you know, and we give them a plan that they have to follow. And traditionally, we have no problems. Usually, it's because something, they've just kind of taken things for granted, and they just need to be reminded that they need to step it up. But those are, again, those are the rare occasions.
I'm still not clear on that. So if they are coming in at a score of 3, are they still getting a merit raise?
Below a 3.
So below a 3.
Or a score below a 3, meaning at a 2 or something like that, yeah, they do not get a salary increase until such time as they've completed their PIP and actually gone through the motions, followed, has already been reviewed again for a second time, then they go ahead and probably get their 3.
And I was just going to clarify, it's, if you're not at least a 3, you're not meeting standards. And so that's when you're put on a Performance Improvement Plan, which lays out very specific things that you've got to do to get up to standards. And if you don't get up to standards, then you face termination.
Okay, thank you.
So at a 3, you're still eligible then for a merit increase, at a 3?
Yes. Below a 3, you're not.
But that was the answer to the question. On average, where, what is our merit percentage average given to employees? And on average, it's a 3.86. The cost of living adjustment, which of course, last year, there was, it was 0, this year was a .3. We were looking at 33,000. That has been eliminated, was not in the budget to start with, or wasn't to start with, was one of the things we trimmed out to balance the budget. Longevity, $48,000, that also was eliminated in order to balance the budget. Our health insurance premium increased by 4%. Later on in May, you will have a presentation from CHIROS, as I mentioned, AP EHP, Arizona Public Employers Health Group, is morphing in with the Chandler School District into a new program called CHIROS. There will be very minor, minor changes to the health insurance plan. However, the question that was posed to us was dependent versus employee coverage costs. And roughly a $2.3 million annual health cost for the city of Cottonwood, 62% of it is for employees, 38% of it is for dependent coverage, and the numbers are there, 1.4 million for, just to cover our employees, 874,000 for dependent coverage. And the percentages for dependent coverage, again, varies from spouse, children, and spouse and children being family. Our retirement costs, of course, continue to skyrocket, not necessarily with the ASRS. They're a totally different animal from public safety personnel retirement system, but as you can see, our public safety retirement system costs percentages are going up dramatically this upcoming year. They do their actuarials, they tell us what we should be paying, and that's what we pay. We don't, we're, fortunately, this is, all three of these are out of our control. They're the ones who tell us what needs to be contributed in order to keep the plans whole. And at this point in time, basically, what they're doing is they're upping the rates because eventually, they'd like to be close to fully funded. And unfortunately, we are saddled with a big liability, as is every community in the state and every community in the nation is saddled with similar problems.
I have a question.
It's not a Cottonwood issue, it is a nationwide issue.
Historically, once they're fully funded, is this something that could go down?
It could go down, and it could improve. I mean, we could get a little bit, get to 60% funded, and interest rates do well, they've got great investments, and we could potentially have a very quick update. At the same time, we could fund them 100%, and the economy drops, and their investments go south, and we're back to square one.
Okay.
So it's, and again, it's out of our control. They have a board, they have boards that actually do the investment. Unfortunately, we're stuck with the liability because of GASB 68.
And again, if you read that information I sent you about the history of public safety retirement in particular, you know, it depends on what they're invested in. And now, apparently, they've given them a little more leeway in terms of what they can invest in, but a lot of the problems with PSPRS was they were heavily invested in land. They were speculating like everybody else on land, and when the recession hit, it hit the public safety retirement pretty hard. You know, the other thing, I think it's important to state is, you know, we do invest a lot in our employees, but the reality is, the product we produce is service. And we need people that are well-qualified, well-trained, and have the right approach to providing service that we want to see. And so while that's a large part of our budget, it's certainly not unreasonable compared to other cities and municipalities and towns across Arizona and the country. In fact, probably to a large extent, our personnel costs are actually lower as a percentage of our budget. So, but again, this is where we invest to make sure that we can provide the services that we do.
Rudy, I actually had a question on the prior slide that I had in my notes that I didn't think to ask earlier. Earlier, you said that we'd have under $10,000 of an impact from the range changes with these current jobs?
Approximately.
Do you, have you, do we have a long-term cost estimate of what, you know, this decision here will cost us long-term?
The changes in the range, based on that extra increase, a 5% increase across the personnel at the top end, if they ever do reach the top end, it's very difficult to determine exactly what is going to happen because we do have people that will leave, new people come in at lower ranges as we did, we may have with the court. Everything being equal, at the top end would be about a 5% increase. But in reality, you have people coming in, people that go out, we have new staff, we increase staff, we decrease staff. So it's very difficult to actually give you an actual number, but at this point in time, we're looking to try to get people in to relieve the compression issue and try to get, you know, more qualified or disqualified officers into our ranks.
So we're not looking at anything more than an additional 5% increase where we would have reached our ceiling already in some instances?
In some of these cases, yeah, you're raising their ceiling, but once they hit the top end, they're stuck there unless there's a cost of living or a longevity. And as you can see, we're not giving cost of living or longevity.
Okay, thanks.
Again, this is, of course, a repeat, like, six slides will be a repeat of what we had at the initial budget meeting, and just wanted to go ahead and point out that there's certain issues on here. Take, for example, the economic development with the $1.3 million. That will be grant-funded for the most part. We will probably have to come up with some matching funds for that particular grant. However, the 1.3 is the full grant amount, and this is for the extension of Old Town up to, I believe, 10th Street. And what we're going to do is change the look of the area all the way up to 10th Street and basically make Old Town start at 10th Street. And of course, I can't stress enough that that's grant funding paid for that, at least a big portion of it. We continue with more capital requests, and you have the detail in these legal science sheets, as well as the information as to why they would like to have it, and you know what items that they planned to have that they did not get that will be forwarded into future years or eliminated altogether. We have our street maintenance part of it, that is partially grant-funded, and also includes the excise tax bond that we had, funding that we issued back in 2015. So that money is grant and also money that we already have, in a sense, from the loan that we did back in 2015. The airport, the $2.3 million, as we mentioned, about, and I believe, like about close to 95% of it is grant. The other 5% or so is distributed between the city of Cottonwood and, of course, AGOT. They go ahead and fund that, help us find, fund that other 5%. These traditionally come in, and they're pretty large grants. Airport usually has large grants for their pavement preservation and other issues, and they're, in a sense, cheap money because we don't contribute about 2.5 or so percent of those grants. The other things we've got, of course, is we've got, oops, did I lose it? We have the water and wastewater, the biggest one, of course, being the water system. Those monies, as you may recall, were WIFA, additional WIFA funds that we had to get for a project on Main, on, what is it, Mingus Street, to put in a water line down that street, and also for the State Route 260 line. Those are included in that 3.9 or nearly $4 million that are there. As just as a reminder, the water line on Mingus, it's a million-dollar line, they gave us $550,000 in principal forgiveness just for that particular line costing us only half that amount. And then also the State Route 260 line, a $2 million, nearly a $2 million line, we got $800,000 worth of forgivable principal on that, basically telling us that we're going to do it for about 1.2 or thereabouts. Overall, as you can see, we're looking at about $12 million, $12.5 million worth of capital projects, and the biggest ones, those items on that particular, the larger amount of the $12 million is grant-funded or already money that has been borrowed through WIFA to make some large additional lines that need to get taken care of. We'll move on. The city of Cottonwood understands that there's also needs outside, and one of the things that we do every single year, and we have line items for these organizations on there. Traditionally, some of these organizations, with the exception of the building community grants and the Burning Festival, are items that we would somehow have to assist, or it has some sort of, I mean, sense of moral responsibility to provide. The Old Town Association, we continue to fund them at $10,000. The Senior Center, we continue to fund at 55. All these items are already in your budget. The Humane Society at 443.9, NACOG, that's Water Assistance Funds for people that are low-income and that need some assistance. We still fund them up to 15,000. We start them at 10. We start them at ten, and if they need a week more, we give them an additional five. Chamber of Commerce is funded through our VED tax and that money is distributed eighty-five to Chamber and fifteen percent to the Cottonwood Economic Development Council. The Old Town Center for the Arts, that's our cultural programs down here on Main Street. We assist them with twenty thousand. The Building Community Grants Program that will assist other five oh one C3s in the areas that don't fit in this category, we have fifteen thousand dollars and that should be coming to council in the next couple of months and we'll start getting, making those payments July first. The Birding Festival is split, two thousand dollars. We do that every year. We assist them with a thousand dollars from the general fund and a thousand dollars from our water enterprises.
And this is a part of the presentation where I want to make sure that the council is aware that we've looked at the strategic plan and on those items where it's obviously there's a cost associated with it. We've tried as much as possible to get those budgeted for this next year, such as the Bicycle Advisory's Committee request for a budget and their budget request was sixty-four hundred dollars. That is budgeted. The marketing, Cottonwood trying to get entertainment venues in here, that's budgeted as part of the focus on success too, which is also included in that plan. And that plan is funded at twenty-four seven twenty. Again, unfortunately, we weren't able to fund the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Study. I think our latest estimate is that's about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar endeavor. And again, we just weren't able to do that. The Verdi Valley Wine Festival, the discussions we're having so far would indicate that that's not a cost to the city. There may be some overtime costs related to personnel, but at this point, we haven't budgeted anything for that. Thunder Valley Rally is budgeted for a hundred and fifty thousand and there's a portion of that that does come back through the, through the fees that we pay to participate in that. We have the Police Internship Program budgeted. Again, it's contingent upon grant funding. Collaborate with the Chamber to remarket the wine trail. At this point, that's something that'll be funded by the Chamber and possibly CEDC. And we do fund them at the tune of two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. We're coordinating with the Nature Conservancy, obviously, they put together a nice riverfront or funded a nice riverfront trails planned for us. We do have the budget authority in the budget and we do anticipate that we'll get a grant to be able to complete at least a portion of that plan this next budget year.
How much was put in the budget for that?
It's pretty open. I mean, you know, it's, we could easily do a couple hundred thousand in budget authority. So it's one of those where we don't want to limit ourselves. And that's why Rudy and his staff tend to be fairly lenient with our budget authority to make sure that we're not having to turn something away because we don't have the authority to spend it. In terms of injecting nine hundred acre feet of reclaimed water, that is funded in our Water Development Fund and we're using some of that money as well as our money from the Central Arizona Project that we had setting aside. We, obviously, as you've gone through this budget process, you can see that we've looked at reducing expenditures and each department has taken an overall budget reduction of three percent this year. It doesn't look like it because of the way we measure the percentages, but those cuts are in there.
Can you explain that a little bit more because it's, you know, I know that we were trying to reduce it by three percent, but when you flip through here and see the increases of three to thirty percent in budgeted, in the budgets, how is it that they, how do you reconcile those two numbers?
It is, you know, I was noticing the same thing. And what you, what that percentage is based on is the year-end department head estimate versus what was budgeted last year. So if you look at the line that says, Department Head Estimate six thirty seventeen, I think that's the one. And so it's what they ended up this year, at the end of this year, compared to what they're asking for next year. Now, what I'd like to see is a percentage that takes into account the budget request for this year versus what was requested last year. And I think you would see those decreases.
And that's not shown on this?
No, it's not.
Spreadsheet?
And that's something that, if it's acceptable in terms of, you know, accounting standards, it might be something we want to look at. So, because I think it does tend to give the wrong impression that we've got these large increases compared to last year's budget when we really don't. Does that, does that help, Mayor?
I think it would help more if we could compare it to, you know, the same metric from last year, I guess.
Yeah, one budget year starting to the next budget year starting. Because obviously, like in, like in Communications, we had a significant decrease in salaries, which really wasn't accounted for in that percentage necessarily. But, and I'm trying to think of how this goes, but we had a substantial increase in overtime and I'm not sure that those two differences are being reflected based on the year's end budget versus, you know, so in essence, for next year, even though we spent a hundred and eighty thousand in overtime this year, we're only budgeted for ninety for next year. Well, it shows that we're taking a big decrease in overtime, which really wasn't the case. So we need to look at that. I mean, again, and Rudy and his folks probably understand this completely, but for the layperson like me and the public and council, it may not really paint the picture that's the reality.
I have to agree. Mr. Bartosz, if we could get that, I think that will definitely help the public as well when their perception is we're spending out the, you know, yahoo and we're not, that the budget is decreased by three percent. I remember I've sat in the office and watched our department heads just agonize cutting three percent out of their funds and then to say that they overspent, it's infuriating. So, yeah, I think that would be helpful.
So let us have a discussion about that tomorrow and...
Well, let me just point something out real quick. You want to compare in a sense budget to budget, this year's budget, if you look at the budget, well, it would be, you're looking at, you're wanting to know if it increased from the last year's budget, from the current budget adopted in May or June of last year. That's what you're looking for. We'd have to go back and take out all the capital and stuff in order to make that balance if that's what you would like. But you have to, I think there's a lot of factors involved. It's not that easy to just say, well, it's a three percent cut and that's all there is to it. You have to realize that all of our costs are also going up. Salary is going up, our...
Retirement.
Our retirement is going up and those are things we have no control over. Utilities are going through the roof and we don't have any control over it. So it's hard, it's not an apples and apples comparison. What we do do is we try to get all these items and then we try to fit it into the current revenues that we have. And if we don't, then we go back and tell them, we want a three percent cut. And this is basically what they do is they go out and they trim off, regardless of all the increases that are coming in, they have to go back and cut back the three percent off of their budgets. So it's really difficult, it's not an easy apples-to-apples comparison because you have an officer that, or let's just say a car that this year is going to cost you sixty grand to outfit, next year it's sixty-five grand and off of that sixty-five grand, we ask them to trim it down three percent. It's still going to be probably more expensive than the sixty grand, but it's our costs are going up. We just have to make sure that we shoehorn it into the current revenue that we have.
I think it's more of a line item issue as opposed to total budget because like, you know, we're down four police officers, yet we're showing an increase...
Correct.
...in salaries. And that's based on the fact that it's the year-end estimate versus what we started the budget with. So anyway, we can talk about it tomorrow, Rudy, and figure out if there's a way that we can present that that gives that three percent more of a visual reality. Any other questions on that?
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, it would. I mean, I think it would, I just think that the spreadsheet again doesn't really reflect that. And I don't mean to suggest that departments didn't agonize and go through cuts, but, you know, when your eye is drawn to the bottom of the page, that the percentage change, it doesn't seem like we're cutting anything at all. It'd be nice to, you know, be able to show folks, not that, not that we're here to cut, 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 but we are here to keep things in balance and, you know, fourteen percent to thirty-some percent increase in the departments, it seems like we're growing exponentially. It'd be nice to show the reality.
Yeah. And maybe there is a way to show that overall in that we know we cut, what was it, almost eight hundred thousand dollars out of the department budgets on those items that they control.
And I understand, yeah, we can't control retirement, we can't control utilities.
Utilities and those kind of things, so...
I think if we could get some examples of those items, I think that would be helpful. You know, this is what it was and this is where it was cut. I, I mean, not, not high level, I'm talking real, you know, examples of it. I think that would, that would be helpful for me, I know.
And actually, in the slides, there is, there is a few of those examples. And we actually have people here that can probably give you some of the extra examples too. But we'll continue, we'll talk about it if you want some more information.
See if we can come up.
I think it's just a way of making this very complex document more approachable to the layman, which I think is important.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I think this is the last slide. The, you know, we've talked about expanding transit into the Village of Oak Creek and Cornville, but that's going to take county partnerships. And so far, you know, they're facing the same budget challenges we are and so we're going to have to continue to work on that and see if that can break loose, continue participation in NAMO. The dues are budgeted for that and we'll continue to participate. Increase budget for roadway maintenance as directed by the council, that was twenty-five percent. And so we increased roadways, one hundred and fifty thousand, and sidewalks, twenty thousand to meet that directive. And then we are working on that grant to extend the streetscape in Old Town out to Tenth Street. And that's, again, the budget authority is in the budget at, I believe it's two point two million, so that's in there as well. So again, I just wanted to make sure that the council knew that we were paying attention to the strategic plan and making sure that where we needed to budget, we did. But obviously, there's some areas that we just didn't have the money to do. But again, the council wants to circle back and look at budgeting some of those areas, that's certainly an option as well.
I appreciate that. And in future years, I'd like to have our retreat come a little bit sooner in the year prior to the department setting, establishing their budget so we can all kind of share that communication. So council can set the priorities before, you know, the departments can absorb that information and work it out in their own budget.
And we'll touch base on a few of our budget reductions. As we mentioned earlier on Monday, that we've already, that we were already eliminating two officers. That makes four that we have eliminated. We are eliminating one more communications specialist to the tune of over two hundred thousand dollars this year alone. That makes four officers, one communications specialist. I did ask the council if they would, would not mind having, reserving the right for the city manager to bring on another police officer if we are able to get a qualified candidate and of course, if we have the funding available. Those two, those two things coming together, the city manager would like to have the right to add that one, one of those slots back in. Again, we do have the budget authority, we would just have to do a budgetary adjustment later on in the year.
You know, one of the things I'll add too, because I think it was the mayor who asked what else we're doing to try and get these positions filled, we are looking for trained police officers as well, those who have already been through the police academy at least. And I've authorized him to offer up to midpoint with, obviously, coming to me and getting my approval first, but looking at offering all the way up to midpoint if we can find somebody who's trained and that they're anxious to come on board. So we're pulling out all the stops. I know the chief has done a recruitment video that'll end up showing on Cable One channels. We've got banners up around the city and so, you know, we're doing everything we can to try and attract some qualified people in.
A few other items that were cut in order to balance the budget. We've cut our travel training dramatically in most of the departments, which of course, that means that some of our training and requirements are going to have to probably take the way, go fall by the wayside until maybe next year. We have our contractual services, we've got a lot of issues that we are just going to have to either do without or wait until some other time to get them done. Employees, the four FTEs that were eliminated, and then we also trimmed down a lot of our temps. The problem being is we're constantly getting hit with rising retirement costs and of course, now the wage issue is really a big one for us. Twenty percent increase in wages is not something that you would expect. Unfortunately, we got saddled with that one. Office printing, operational supplies, those were trimmed down. Subscription and memberships have been repaired down quite a bit. Book purchases, library have been, have been cut back a bit. Some of our recreational programming is going to go by the wayside, such as our softball and a couple of other things that some of our other events are going to have to get trimmed out in order to make, to make these cuts. And then of course, a lot of our vehicle and maintenance is going to have to go by the wayside. We priority courses with our police department, our fire department, especially our fire department, if something goes down, it is not cheap, it's expensive to repair. So we'll maintain those, the other vehicles will still be maintained on a regular basis, but we'll be careful about not going over some of these line items. So that's an example of the budgetary cuts that we've taken this year and just about every single apartment has taken ahead one way or the other. Our reserve fund statuses, our sixty-day coverage is in place, a little over three million dollars. The capital accumulation fund, council had requested to cap it at a million, it is still funded at a million. Undesignated reserves, council had requested at some point to bring back a hundred thousand dollars worth of undesignated reserves. We couldn't keep it to that point, so we're at thirty thousand zero seventy-five. And by the way, boss, you don't have a contingency fund anymore. You lost it. If there's no other questions on that part of it, that's mostly general funding and I concentrate on the general fund, their reserves and their fund balances because that fund has, is responsible for every other fund. If something goes wrong in a fund, the general fund has to come up with the cash to go ahead and fund it. As an example, the library, eight hundred thousand dollars, her fund, it doesn't support itself anymore, so we have to go ahead and contribute money to it. We provide all the matching funds for our transit system. We provide all the matching funds for our transit system. So a lot of money is not necessarily contained in the general fund, it's being funneled to other departments that cannot, the other funds that cannot, can't support themselves. The wastewater is also an enterprise fund that at this point cannot support itself, but we've got a plan, at least a temporary plan fixed to, to go ahead and still get some of the things done that need to get done over that plan. Wanted to touch base, one of the questions that came up was, um, on, on the wastewater rates was, uh, I had mentioned that rates had not been increased for over decades. The rates over the past year, the, the rate, uh, I think the last time we had, before two thousand thirteen, I think the last rate we had done up to sixteen seventy-five was back in two thousand and one. So we went twelve years without a rate increase. We went up to sixteen seventy-five, at, in two thousand fourteen, we went to twenty-six, twenty-five, two thousand fifteen, twenty-nine, fifteen, and, uh, two thousand sixteen, currently we're at thirty-two dollars. Mind you, unlike a lot of other wastewater treatment plants where they use flow as part of the cost, the city cottonwood has a, a static rate for each and every residential property or multi-residential property. Commercial is a little bit different, they're, they have a little bit of a, of a charge base on their usage. But of course, the big bulk is our residential, multi-residential. Uh, we do not go by flowage. And what I mean by flowage is a lot of the, a lot of wastewater companies actually not, they have a base rate and then there's another rate based on the amount of water that they use. Uh, we understand that a lot of the water that we use doesn't necessarily go out down the toilet or down your sink, it actually is for other purposes such as swamp cooler and stuff. So we've always stuck to keeping a static rate for each and every resident, which of course is causing us a little bit of a problem because our wastewater treatment plant up on Mingus, it needs some assistance. Um, wastewater rates were supplemented by sales tax up until, uh, July first, two thousand and seven. Back then, it was used for capital, debt service, repairs, maintenance, operations and maintenance, and that kept the rates artificially low. Um, and then subsequent to that, uh, when we did start making rate changes, council asked that we do a smoothing on the rate so that we wouldn't have a, a sharp increase. Well, it sounded like a great idea and after three or four years of working with it, it's, we've realized that we need the cash now in order to be able to, um, rehab our Mingus plant. Um, unfortunately, we're, we're just now going to be, in the next month or so, we'll be starting our rate, uh, setting process. We've got most of the committee in place, uh, and we'll start having meetings on a fairly regular basis and come back to the council later on in the next fiscal year to go ahead and get rates, uh, adjusted, both, uh, either adjusted or, or at least something to, to bring something to the council for both water and wastewater. Um, the infrastructure and our treatment plants, uh, need repair. Our lift stations are aged, I think it was late in eighty-nine, eighties, when we put in that wastewater treatment plant along with all the infrastructure, uh, it's aged. We've been real fortunate that we're still able to put liners in a lot of our, uh, areas, uh, which keeps everything flowing. But unfortunately, we're one of those, uh, cities that has a plant at a real high elevation, so we have to pump everything up. And of course, that means that we have to have, um, lift stations and with pumps and a lot of electricity. And they wear down even though we've done a great job of maintaining them, uh, at some point, we need to go ahead and get them rehaped. Uh, so we, we're, we're needing a lot of those things taken care of. We're going to have to look at realistic rate increases in order to keep up with the aging infrastructure. We're fortunate that ours is thirty years old and not like some of these eastern, uh, cities that, uh, have been around for hundreds of years and their infrastructure is even in worse shape than ours. We're still at a point where we can rehab ours reasonably, was reasonably inexpensive, I shouldn't say cheap, but reasonably inexpensive, and still get decades of use out of them. If you look at our infrastructure needs, we were looking at two thousand and seventeen, whatever we don't do this year at one point six million, we're going to have to roll over into next year. And you can see where we're, we're needing some, some major repairs in our equipment, our lift stations, every lift station costs us roughly three hundred thousand dollars to, to rehab. Uh, we, we, we have, uh, controller issues, turbines that are old and very inefficient. Bless you. Uh, we've had, we, we even, uh, we had to forego a solar grant a few, couple of years ago because there was no way they could put a solar panels, enough solar panels on there just to drive the turbines because they're, they're thirty years old and, um, and they're very inefficient. And the new turbines, of course, are highly efficient and we would have been able to get some money. Unfortunately, we were, had to, to kind of sideline that. Um, so as you can see, our numbers are, are, are way up there. We're looking close to seven million dollars in, in repair over the next few years for that particular facility. And that includes the lift stations themselves. In the meantime, we're looking at a one point one million infrastructure shortfall for that facility with the, the kind of work that it actually needs for this upcoming year, we're looking at one, a little over a million dollars. The one point one is for infrastructure rehab, not for maintenance and operation. They don't have a problem funding their maintenance and operation, this is for infrastructure. The riverfront reclamation facility is, is got some costs that, that are above what we anticipated, what anticipated way back when. Uh, they're much needed. Uh, we have infrastructure repairs, the, the plant up on Mingus, of course, has been twenty-four, seven for thirty years and we're still, uh, having to maintain that facility and we will for some time. Um, our temporary solutions for, for this, for these, for that issue is to do a short-term loan from our water company, as I mentioned, uh, on Monday, and compensate the water company for actually the, for the use of those funds. Uh, again, uh, we're, if we're going to have to pull money out of there, we should compensate them because that's, uh, interest that they would be losing, so we would like to go ahead and compensate them for it. The permanent solution, of course, is to have the rate study this coming year, look realistically at where we need to be and eliminate the idea of the smoothing process. Once we get the rates where they need to, we might revisit the smoothing process, but I'd rather go ahead and just have it on a, on an annual basis. Where you need to be is where you need to be. Any questions?
Still not on board with that interest rate. But-
I'm not either. I, 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 this is one of those moments where Mary Linsky and I are, I, I agree with, with-
Um, again, you're, you're basically taking money, uh, the way, this is the way I see it, as you're taking money that could be invested in earning one and a half to two percent interest and you're going to be tying it up on something that, that, uh, that should be at least returning you what you are losing in, in interest. And I think that it's only right that you, these being enterprises running as a business, that you should compensate the facility for the use of their money.
I, I do understand your logic, but if I had to borrow twenty bucks from my wife to spot me some money for lunch and she charged me interest, I'd be upset.
You know what? I was thinking that sort of the same analogy, that I'm going to start charging my husband interest. You know?
But I understand your logic. It would, it would earn money in an account if it was sitting there.
Right.
So you want to make that account whole, I can understand that. But I couldn't get much beyond a higher interest rate, you know, like making money, that the, that the water utility would make money off the sewer utility seems, seems counterintuitive.
It's just a process to make them whole. Um, again, um, since we're reaching the, the end of this meeting, wanted to mention that, uh, mark your calendars, June the sixth, we have public hearings and a tentative budget. And June the twentieth, we have yet another public hearing and the final budget adoption. Do want to mention that the city cottonwood doesn't have to have budget hearings. Uh, budget hearings are usually required if you have truth and taxation and truth and taxation becomes, uh, necessary when you have a property taxing, we don't. Uh, but we do have public hearings because we want to have, make sure, we try to get some sort of feedback from the public on this document that you're going to get, that's about three hundred some odd pages, and we will get it posted ahead of time on our website. Um, the tentative budget actually will, will actually establish, adopting a tentative budget actually establishes the bottom line, we cannot go over that bottom line. Council, after the budget, tentative budget is adopted, can make changes. You can ask us, well, would you mind moving this? We get an officer, we do budget adjustment, we can't, but we cannot go over that amount, uh, for that, for that year. It just basically says, this is where you're going to be and you will not cross that line. Fair enough. Um, then the final, uh, bu- budget adoption being June the twentieth, if it gets adopted then, then we reformat the document just slightly and we submit it for, to GFOA. Helen and Kirsten do that work nowadays. I, I kind of stay out of their, their way when they're putting that stuff together nowadays. Uh, I just kind of proof through it before it goes out and it's really what I do nowadays with that document. Thirty years is enough. Um, with that being said, uh, again, if there's any questions, uh, comments, and again, I can't stress enough that, that doesn't mean that, say, speak now or forever hold your peace. Uh, if something comes up later on tonight, tomorrow, next week, next month, by all means, you know, shoot it over to us and we will be happy to, to, to get you an answer or at least a call back to, to get some clarification on what it is that you need.
And so after budget adoption, when, when do you come back to update us on revenue streams and how we're doing on our projections?
We go out and we put out, we put out, uh, almost monthly, we put out a report out on the website. Uh, we, we can, I think we're, we can go ahead and send it to you on a regular basis so you can see, and it's basically, it's basically what you have in there, but you have the current running of all of our totals. So you can go ahead and do that. Currently, I'm a little bit behind on our, currently, I'm a little bit behind on our quarterly reports. Uh, mainly it's just, just one thing after another hitting us. I do have, I've got to update the website as far as our quarterly reports are concerned and then get up the, get up to speed on the quarterly reports. But there's a quarterly report on, on our website. Um, there, uh, we put out a monthly, uh, or try to keep a monthly running, uh, journal out there for everyone to see. Uh, and we can go ahead and email that to our council when we produce it.
Bless you.
I mean, I can go in here every month and you can give a report and, and, and answer questions. Traditionally, we, what we've done is just go ahead and post it up on the website and we can go ahead and send that up to you directly. That way, if you have any questions, it's basically what you have in your hands and you can see, uh, where people have gone over or under or explanations as to why.
Okay. Very good. Well, I'm a little disappointed we're not going to meet tomorrow night.
We, we can do it for you, we have no problem.
Yeah. Um, that's all. Last, next item is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or adjourned? Thank you very much, council.
Thank you, Mayor, council.